This September seventeenth, two thousand, school board meeting. The meeting of the Independent School District, five thirty-five school boards called to order at five thirty-three PM Tuesday, September seventeenth in room one thirty-seven of the Edison Building. Present at the board table is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools and a non-voting ex-official member of the board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Amundson?
Here.
Chair Barlow?
Here.
Ms. Marvin?
Here.
Ms. Nathan?
Here.
Mr. Schluschner?
Here.
Ms. Seelinger?
Here.
Ms. Workman?
Here.
Let's stand as we're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item is two point zero one, approval of agenda. This is an action item. Mr. Munoz?
Yes, I'd like to call your attention. Item seven point zero four, resolution disappointing an employee has been added.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Agenda's approved. Three, recognitions, informational item. Mr. Munoz?
Yes, at this time, I'm going to call Chris Forgerty, Century High School Principal, Troy Priggy, Mayo High School Principal.
Good evening, Superintendent Munoz, Ms. Edgar, members of the board. It is an honor and a privilege to recognize a number of students here this evening from Century High School that will, for their great academic accomplishments, but then also their service to the community. First, I'd like to bring up Salma Abdi. If you could come on up. I told her you might ask her lots of questions, so she's well-versed. So Salma Abdi has the distinct honor and privilege to represent herself, her family, Century High School, and the Rochester Public Schools as a member of the Minnesota Youth Council. The Minnesota Youth Council is a collaboration of youth and adults working together to empower, mobilize young people across the state to exercise their voices, opinions, and ideas, and take action on issues affecting youth. In two thousand thirteen, the Minnesota Legislature formally recognized the work of the MYC, passing into law the Minnesota Youth Council Committee Bill, which establishes the MYC as an official legislative committee, creating a system for youth to provide advice and recommendations to the legislature and the governor. Congratulations. Do you have any questions for her?
How did you find out about this opportunity? And how can those coming after you, younger than you, learn more about it?
I've always wondered about like things I could do to help people, especially the youth, because we're not really fully represented and our voice wasn't being heard. So I spent a bunch of time online searching it up, and I found out about it. And then I was reading about it and what they did and all the things they've passed and all the work they've been doing, so I applied for it. And there's like a bit of application and stuff, and I got onto it, which I'm really excited about.
We are too.
Congratulations.
Those Century students that received a perfect score on their ACT, please come on During the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year, we had four students at Century High School that received a thirty-six, which is a perfect composite score on the ACT. With us tonight, we have Stephen Yang, along with his parents. Get all my sheets together here. Okay, where are the...I know Purnav's here, but I want to also recognize the other students. Here we go. Purnav Karan Avula is also here, so he's also a senior. Both are seniors this year. Hemant Asserbatham is the third student, and then Emma Erickson, all seniors this year. Now, did you receive this score at the test we take at Century this spring? When was this score?
September of twenty eighteen.
Okay. How about you?
I received mine on, I think, December eighth of twenty eighteen.
Okay. Well, congratulations for your academic achievements, and I've got used to seeing them at school and can't wait to see what you continue to do as you move through this year and on to the next steps. Very well done.
I'm Troy Priggy, Principal of Mayo High School, and I think what happened is the two students that were going to be recognized also for MYC are at the cross-country meet that was postponed until tonight, so sorry about not having somebody for the pledge. But I do want to recognize Shekha Kumar and Tripp Dow are two students that were also selected by the Minnesota Youth Council, and they were going to say a little bit about that honor tonight, too, but we're very proud of them and for applying and seeking out to make a difference in government and for our youth. So, thank you.
Troy, just stay up there. I'm going to go ahead and call Art up at this time.
Mr. Trimble's on his way up here. So, as he makes his way up, we had a really nice opportunity to collaborate with Country Financial and the Minnesota Vikings to nominate a Teacher of the Game. Mr. Trimble's going to tell you about what that award looks like, but it was a pretty easy decision for us to nominate Mr. Trimble for this honor, because he does just about everything for us, and he'll talk a little bit about what he does, too. But he really does make a difference for our youth, and students really do look up to him, and he's a great role model for our students. So I'm just going to let Art come on up here and tell you about what he's won.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Priggy. Mr. Priggy asked me to tell you a little bit what I'm involved in. Been here before for coaching wrestling and bringing kids up for that. I'm also one of the student government advisors. I do the freshman orientation Spartan three hundred advising. I work with the tailgating crew, crowd control at football games, master of Simon Says at all sorts of events, and lots of different things. I also teach chemistry. I probably should talk about the main job in physics, so it's science as well. So it's a really cool honor, I'm super excited to get this award, being a huge Vikings fan. So what entails is Mankato West and Mayo High School play at the Minnesota Viking Training Facility on Saturday, September twenty-eighth. So I get to go up with ten extra special tickets for friends and family and get recognized during the halftime show, and also receive a thousand-dollar check for school supplies or things for Mayo High School that we need. And then, even more exciting for me, December eighth against the Minnesota Viking game against Detroit Lions, I get to head up to the Country Financial suite. So, yeah, yeah, very exciting, and hang out with there. I assume that's with the other teachers, because I believe there's five games at the training facility for the Vikings, and I assume Mankato West and Mayo get one, and then one from each of the other schools that are playing there. So we all get to do that, and then I believe head out on the field during the Vikings game and get recognized in front of everyone over halftime. Had to do a little bio, so I did a little plug-in. My favorite Vikings, Adam Thielen, really going for a handshake, maybe a photo. We'll see if that happens, but it's such a cool honor. Thank you for letting us teachers do what we do and get involved with so many different activities. And thank you to Mayo High School and Mr. Priggy for nominating us, so thank you.
Questions or anything?
I have one.
Sure.
When you're on the field, do you think you're going to lead the entire audience in Simon Says?
Probably, but I've done pretty large crowds before. But nothing over probably seven hundred at a time, so it might be a little intense.
Just a word of advice. I had the opportunity to kick off the hockey game here last winter, and I just, my goal was not to slip on the ice and fall down, so don't trip on the turf and fall down. But I've been in Art's classroom many times, and he's an excellent teacher, and he's involved in everything at Mayo, but most importantly, he's just a great person, and I'm glad that you received this honor.
Thank you.
And we're at three point zero two, Cradle to Career Update. Julie Brock, I'm sorry. Julie is Executive Director of Cradle to Career, and glad you're here this evening.
And former employee with Art at Mayo High School. I just wanted to kind of plug that in, because he's pretty a big deal. He really is worthy of that award. It's super exciting. Hello, it's good to see you, and welcome back. Excited that the kids are back in school. I would like to let you know that my child is doing his portion of catching the back-to-school cold, and I kept him home, so he doesn't pass it. So public health as well. I'm so excited to talk to you today, because we just came back from DC last week, and we came back from our national convening. Remember that Cradle to Career is part of a national movement across the states, and we are one of nearly seventy communities doing this work. And so I just wanted to refresh you, refresh me, and then also those at home that may be watching. So again, when we think about Cradle to Career, we're not a program. We are a service. We serve our community partners who are doing the hard and great work within the classroom and outside of the classroom, serving our children and our families to the best of their ability. So some network updates. They are actually meeting this week. So kindergarten readiness met tonight, and they let out, I think, right at five thirty. And then high school graduation is meeting, I believe, tomorrow night. So when we think about their updates, it's pretty stagnant to where we were last month as well, but both of them are really excited to regroup after summer. Summer tended to be a slower time. We're learning actually from the national convening that everyone is slow in summer, so we may just start to follow the school schedule a little bit more closely. But if you do hear of anyone who is excited and wanting to join our networks, kindergarten readiness or high school graduation, we would like you to put them in contact with Christina Wright Peterson. So operations, just to let you know that in data, we do have a dedicated director now, Kelsey Zupki, and we have a halftime data analyst, and we are ready to enable to offer any sort of training. So as you are thinking through departments or buildings or any of that sort, we are here to support and be in partnership. So when we think about equity, our staff and leadership table are starting our intercultural development inventory, our IDI, which I know that that will be the base to our racial equity lens, and hearing the strategic plan, we know that the district is looking to that soon as well, so we hope that we are able to partner and just with the idea of consistency in language and that sort of thing. And then when we think about results, we're really excited. Community schools, Gage Community Schools Leadership Team has asked Christina and I to be part of that, so we'll be sitting on that leadership team meeting starting this week. So that's exciting. Like I said, we went to this Drive Together convening, and that was awesome. We learned many things, and one of the things that we learned most importantly is the partnerships with community schools accelerate the work on both of collective impacts, which is validating for our work here in our neck of the woods. So one of the things that came out of this particular convening was really focused on racial equity and on policymaking. One of the things that we can think about is really the influence of policy, how we can work together to show that community schools and Cradle to Career working together is a model that works. And also, one of our learning was around data capability and capacity, if it's best built in the pilot setting, which, and through trusted relationships. So again, the fact that we have a strong partnership with community schools, where we are able to pilot any sort of data workings is fantastic. Also, we learned that allowing for neutral facilitation to happen when we are in the building, if we're starting with people who are new to this process, or they don't know anything about Cradle to Career, having that neutral facilitated or results-based accountability is really important. One partnership that we know is doing this really well is Strive Partnership in Cincinnati, and so Julie Ruzek and I are looking at a meeting or a visit to go learn from what they have done. And then another key issue that is not unique to us, but Cradle to Career, because it's kind of a weird little thing, and the fact that people still ask me, so wait, what program do you do? Yet none, but we support the work of our hard educators and community partners doing the work. And so we also want to start an awareness campaign. It's key for educators to feel supported by the community and feel like this isn't something that's happening over here and potentially to them, but really that we are making sure that everyone is aware and know what we're doing and why we're doing it. And so if there's any groups that you would like me to start with when we think about visiting and doing the Cradle to Career Roadshow, please let me know. And the last few slides that I have are really about the fall convening. We will present our community update at the breakfast portion of this day. We're very excited about this event. The first part is really about the community update, what's happening with the networks, and also we're going to be delivering a Cradle to Career experience, so that we can really show visually what a Cradle to Career experience means for children and their families. And the rest of the day is around breakout sessions, around our three tracks, data, racial equity, and collective impact. And so we are excited. We have presenters that are from in our, or within Rochester, but also from other Cradle to Career communities across the state. And then also Kim Norton will be joining us for lunch as well. So I think it's going to be a jam-packed day, worth the fifteen dollars for breakfast or the seventy-five for the day. So if you know of anyone who would benefit from that, please pass that information along. And the last one that I have is Art Rolnick, who is the former Director of the Minnesota Fed, is coming to town to discuss the importance of early childhood education investments. We're calling this event Enhancing Workforce Through Early Childhood Investments, because we understand that your workforce will pay off if you invest in them young, and when we get resources to kids when they need them, then they can be more successful as they continue on. This event will be from eight-thirty to eleven at the Hilton Downtown, and it's Continental Breakfast for ten dollars. Information is on our website. Any questions? Try to keep it condensed for you. All right. Thank you again for your partnership. I'm very excited for what the year holds.
Thank you. Three point zero three, Rochester Public School Foundation Grants. Mr. Munoz?
Yes, I'm going to invite Ginny up and those who received the grants from Rochester Public Schools Foundation.
Good evening. I'm Ginny Amundson, and I am this year's President of our PSF, Rochester Public School Foundation. The mission of the Rochester Public School Foundation, well, we are a nonprofit community foundation that connects the community and our schools to advance and inspire educational opportunities for all students. Our main activity is awarding grants to support innovative enhancements to curriculum that may not otherwise occur due to limited resources. Since nineteen eighty-eight, we have given out over five hundred thousand dollars in grants. Tonight, we will, I will be presenting grants, there are six projects, and the total's seven thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars. Now, the funds that we use to award grants come from personal and business donations, including school district payroll deductions, and our main fundraiser, which is Boo Fest right now, but we do have other fundraisers, and we have established memorial funds. Two of these funds I'm going to highlight tonight, the Mike Waddin Fund, was established in nineteen ninety-four to fund creative educational excellence through innovative participation and education quality in Rochester Public Schools, while providing assistance for students who may not otherwise be able to participate. And the Jacqueline Goodyear Fund, established in nineteen eighty-eight, to support fine arts projects and opportunities in public schools, which are not traditionally part of the curriculum. Such projects may include sponsored musical and theatrical productions, art exhibits, field trips to art museums, and musical and theater performances, and subsidized student attendance at local fine arts presentations. The fund was established in the memory of Jacqueline Goodyear, who joined the Dorsey and Whitney Law Firm in nineteen eighty-two. And another exciting opportunity that we have this year is that we are one of the highlighted, one of the groups that's highlighted by the Rochester Area Foundation this month. And so if you are excited by what you hear tonight, go to their website and vote for us, so that, because one of the nonprofits there will receive a donation from them. So the grants, we have, we sponsor them, but then they are also required to follow up after they receive them, and they will send a project summary with photos whenever possible, and they'll share outcomes at a team or staff meeting. And then they have opportunities to share their project outcomes with media in partnership with the district's Communication Department. And we ask them, because a lot of these are really, they're outstanding projects. We always have problems trying to limit which ones that we can actually award, and then we will put out some information about this on our website. So tonight, we have, again, there are six projects, and four were able to attend tonight. The first one is from Jefferson Elementary School, and it's the Jefferson Thinker Space. And Julie McLaren, if you would come and just briefly talk about what your project is.
Thank you. I'm Julie McLaren. I'm an instructional coach over at Jefferson Elementary. Our Jefferson Thinker Space project is designed to transform our media center into a dynamic learning environment that fosters curiosity, creativity, collaboration, and critical thinking. By dedicating a space to hands-on learning within the library, students will be given a space to explore new ideas, develop confidence, and test out new ideas with manipulatives and supplies. By partnering with local volunteers, our students will see how their learning fits in the real world, while showing community what a positive, creative generation of learners we are growing at Jefferson.
The next one is Allison Shaver, and she has, her project is Sphero Coding Robots.
I'm Allison Shaver, and I'm at John Adams Middle School. I'm a project Lead the Way teacher. I want to first thank the Rochester Public School Foundation Grant Committee on behalf of the students at John Adams Middle School, providing us with the amazing opportunity to practice our coding skills with Sphero robots for our automation and robotics class. Coding is a skill that we know that many upcoming jobs will include as we progress towards more and more robots in the workplace. Sphero robots provide students with a fun, engaging experience that allows them to see the basics to coding before we jump into the more difficult coding language of our class. A hundred and sixty students this quarter alone will get the opportunity to use the Sphero robots. I cannot wait to see the excitement and joy on their faces next week when we start using them, and this would never have been possible without the help of the Rochester Public School Foundation. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to inspire the next generation of engineers.
Our third project is at John Marshall High School, Chad Otterness, who is not able to be here tonight, and his is transition skills improvement. A little summary, students will increase independent living skills, boost community participation, and develop job-related skills by learning how to use tools such as screwdrivers and wrenches, by experimenting with making, creating, and fixing things, and by learning about home safety, such as fire alarm maintenance. Students will gain social skills by working together to solve problems that require thinking skills and networking. Current students will also create work boxes for future students. Our fourth project is from Pinewood, and it is a sensory-integrated resource room, and Elspeth Eddington will tell you more about that one.
Thank you for having me. I'm now Elspeth Hartman. I am a K through five special education teacher at Pinewood Elementary. Prior to being at Pinewood, I was a studying-free teacher at Willow Creek Middle School. So my students now consist specifically of autism spectrum disorder and emotional and behavior disorders. And both at the middle school level and at the elementary level, one of the biggest barriers to integrating our students was that they just don't always feel safe in a mainstream environment, whether it's because they come from a trauma background, or they have ADHD and it's hard to focus, or just autism alone can be hard to be in a mainstream classroom. So my students and I created a really long list of things that they would love to have in the classroom to make my resource room a safe place for them to do work, to come through if they need a break, or if they're in crisis. So we work together to create a wonderful list of things that we can have, simple things like bean bags, but even things that I can't afford on my own budget, like weighted lap bands, make a big difference for them. So thank you for allowing me to speak, and thank you so much for giving us this money, because it goes a very long way in our classroom. Thank you.
Congratulations.
The next one is also from Pinewood, The Leader in Me, and Angie Ellsworth. We'll talk about that one.
Good evening. I'm representing a team of people who wrote this grant, as well as our entire staff who are implementing. The Leader in Me is a social emotional awareness curriculum that is based on Stephen Covey's Seven Habits of Effective People, and it is implemented in schools across the country and across the globe. And the whole idea behind this came from a grassroots effort from our staff, who, we started with a two-person book study, and as the energy and the emotion and the commitment kind of grew to include nearly our entire licensed staff. So as we were talking about our site plan and looking at all of the common things that we are doing regarding second steps and envoy and CLRT and PBIS, we saw The Leader in Me as an opportunity to really develop a common language, to bring all of those things together that also include a parent component that can really be a part of implementing this building-wide and looking at opportunities to develop leadership skills in all students. And one of the biggest things that I already hear from our staff as they begin implementing it is how the staff, as they look at the seven habits of being proactive and putting first things first, they're starting to use that language themselves with each other, and how it's just growing throughout our whole building. So finding that commonality and having the opportunity to provide students with resources and provide parent education with that is going to be a huge benefit to our building, and we're already feeling some of that environment and that momentum. So thank you.
And then the final one is from the Rochester Alternative Learning Centers, and it is the Land Yacht Newton's Law of Motion. And John Rude and Nicole Whipstead are the directors of the project. By working alongside community partners to design and build functional models of the land yacht and tapping into math, science, English, art, and engineering skills, students will gain insight into real-world engineering, problem-solving, and collaboration. Along the way, students will develop a better understanding and appreciation of the laws and forces of nature, including Newton's Laws of Motion. This project will enhance twenty-first century skills and encourage a passion for learning. So these are, we have moved from, we had, we used to give one grant, cycle of grants per year, and we have now moved to two, and so there are actually fewer here than in the past. But this is the first time we've done this, and our second grant cycle is coming up very soon. So if people are interested, the application will be available in early October, and the deadline to apply is November tenth. And I want to thank the district for your support. The payroll deduction is a wonderful option that you have allowed us to tap into, and also Boo Fest is an exciting opportunity for students, and thank you for the students for providing the facilities, for some staff. We really appreciate that. Any questions?
Director Amundson?
Rochester Public School Foundation has opportunities for the community to get involved with these grants, granting activities?
Yes. So once the, so we will have the application, and we'll collect those, and then we look for a lot of different people to review our grants. It's not just our group of our board members, and so if you are interested in that, it is, it's not a meeting that you have to come to, and it's a very easy process. We have a rubric that you'll just read the grants and fill out the rubric. And so if you're interested in that, you can go to our website, again Rochester Area, Rochester Public School Foundation, and send an email, and we will, we really appreciate that. And also, if you're interested, we're always looking for more board members. That's another option, too. Any other questions?
Director Schilliser?
Do you have the details yet of when and where Boo Fest will be this year?
Yes, I do. It is Saturday, October twenty-sixth. It is at Century High School, and it is from ten until three in the afternoon. And there will be more information coming out through Peachjar and places like that, too, so you can look for it. Thanks for your question. Anyone else?
No, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Three point zero four, Electric Bus, informational item.
Yes, we have a group standing in the back we'd like to bring up. You probably didn't hear them walk in, and they were so quiet, kind of like that bus, but Scott Sheridan, Executive Director, Operations, Jeff Cappers, John, bring up the whole crew. the whole crew.
Good evening, board members. It's 6:01. Good evening. He's pointing that out. A mistake I made last board meeting. By the way, what a wonderful opportunity I have today to introduce these fine people behind me. As you know, Rochester Public Schools and First Student, along with Bluebird and Cummings, we've all partnered together to, First Student has provided us their first electric bus nationwide, First Student's first electric bus nationwide. It's quite an honor to have at our school district. We're going to have the opportunity to use this electric bus. I believe most of you had an opportunity to ride in it until the end of September. It's a rather unique ride, as you know, and very interesting ride. But I'm gonna, with the partnerships, I just want to introduce the people who are here, and if they choose to, allow them the opportunity to say a few words, I won't steal their thunder. But Jeff Cappers, as you know, all these people have been involved in this electric bus crusade. Jeff Cappers from the district, Transportation Manager. Drew Larson is back from RPU, works with RPU. Larry Kramer is the head technician for First Student. John Gates, the manager of transportation at First Student here in Rochester. Jay Brock is the First Student Communications. Did Jay leave? Oh, there he is, over there. He's shy. Communications person that's shy, can you believe that? Anyway, Phil O'Donnell. Phil, you can come up, it's okay. Phil's the Minnesota Area General Manager for First Student. We have Alex Cook, the Chief Engineer for First Student. He's pretty much the mainstay guy, the engineer behind a lot of the technology that you see on that bus. Marcia Brown from Bluebird National, she's the account manager for Bluebird. That's her bus out there. She's responsible for it. And Pam Vermilia from Cummings, she's the General Manager of the Central Region, is here as well. So I believe I'm going to turn over to John Gates to start off, but the rest of you are welcome to say a few words if you wish as well. Thank you.
Well, he surprised me. I didn't know I had to say anything. Well, I just want to thank everybody here. We, we had this opportunity present itself this summer, and it was, hey, we want to bring in an electric school bus. And it was Alex. I said, what? An electric school bus? And it came to fruition. It came in a couple weeks late, but it got here, and we got it fully licensed, and we're expecting it to hit the road tomorrow morning, Route 45. Anybody that rides 45 out there, it services Willow Creek, Mayo High School, and Bamber Valley Elementary School. So it's going to hit the road tomorrow, and you're not going to be able to hear it. If you, if you rode it, you, you know what I mean. It's pretty cool, and it's pretty neat to drive, too. So with that, I mean, we're excited to bring it to you. I appreciate the partnership that we have with the school district here. I mean, Jeff and I, and their staff and our staff work amazingly well together. And that's, that's why we've been here for, I mean, through all the different companies, I figured, over 55 years. And that's pretty cool. So with that, do you have any questions to me?
I just have one. You know, you're going to throw so many parents and students off, even to this day, I listen for the bus. Oh, it's coming. You gotta get out there now. You're gonna have to come something new.
Yep, exactly.
But we're so excited. Thank you so much, partnership. I don't know who the brains were, probably wasn't a single person or entity, but we're thankful that you guys were able to come together and allow this district to be the first one to actually receive this gift of transportation.
And we're using it only for a few days, but we're very proud that we've turned the fleet into a more environmentally friendly fleet. Right now, out of our 153 yellow school buses, 75 of them are propane. And that is, that is a lot more environmentally friendly than the old diesel bus. And with it, with this, we're taking it a step farther. So hopefully, we can, with cooperation, there's got a lot of work to be done, but maybe we can get maybe five, 10 of these things on the road in the next couple of years, even help further that, so.
I further understand the, these have 100-mile capabilities, do not require warm-up time, and that adds all types of, I think, convenience opportunities for, for our transportation, Jeff, in particular. I think we're going to have a great time.
I hope so, and I hope we don't have as many school days canceled this winter.
Just real quick, my name's Alex Cook. I'm the Chief Engineer for First Group America. I'm a boilermaker, so I'm an INE from Purdue. So I just wanted to thank you all for giving us this great honor to launch this technology into the great city of Rochester. I think it parallels, and as you know, I listened to some of your other guest speakers and the forward thinking and the sheer focus on education, it speaks volumes of the people sitting behind that horseshoe table and all of the residents of this community. And we're very honored to have this test. I call it our homework because we're going to, this is a learning experience. You know, along with our partners in Bluebird and Cummins, especially in the harsh environment that we are here in cold weather and conditions, I think we're going to learn a lot. But I think that ultimately, the pros of reduced emissions and leaving our future generations something better than what we have today is in large part why we do what we do. And I think this is a huge step forward to do that. When I originally kicked this off, you know, I had a dream, and it was always Rochester was in the middle of that dream to launch this. A second one, working with our partner at RPU and Drew, we've had lots of subsequent conversations about how do we integrate solar into this? Because my own personal vision is, is that at some point in time, we have a solar partially-supplemented grid such that we can charge the battery and ride the bus for free. So that's later down the road, and we've had lots of conversations with that, but I wanted to whet your appetite. It doesn't stop here with this technology. It keeps moving, and the green wheel keeps turning, and we'll make sure that it does. And again, I think on behalf of Cummins, Utilities, Bluebird, and ourself at First, again, I can't thank you enough for bestowing this honor on us to allow us to do this in your community. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Adamson.
I just wanted to say thank you for the ride in the new bus. I love that new bus smell.
Yes, you're quite welcome. Awesome. Any, any questions on?
Was the driving okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
3.05 Early Voting informational item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Mr. John Carlson, Executive Director of Finance, will provide some information.
Good evening, School Board and Superintendent Munoz. The purpose of this announcement is just to make sure that you and the public knows that early voting for the referendum starts this Friday down at the other end of the hall in Business Services. We are the only place you can absentee your early vote before the November 5th election. So you're allowed to do that from September 20th all the way through November 4th. The hours will be 8:00 AM to 4:45 PM. We also have a Saturday option in there. It's going to be on November 2nd from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. So we are going to have some celebrity voters show up and vote early, so I encourage you to do the same if you'd like to do that.
Director Adamson.
For those of us who have college kids, absentee ballots are available.
Yes, they can call into the office, and we can help them work on getting the application mailed to them. Thanks.
Thank you. Consent Agenda action item, does anyone have any item? 306, oh, in a rush. Are there any board member updates, committee? Director Workman?
I have a whole slew of them. We could be here for another hour. No. I just said we could. Okay. So I'll start with the first one. Actually, I'll start with a very short one, since Mr. Schlusner and Ms. Ammonson and Ms. Ammonson gave you every bit of information you needed to know about Boo Fest, since the Rochester Public Schools Foundation is one of my committees. I understand that in about 10 days, there will be an opportunity for people to sign up for helping with this wonderful event. If you love to decorate, here is your opportunity to help with that and with making signs. I've been told that this was arguably the most fun part about Boo Fest, but I had an awful lot of fun selling tickets last year. Thank you for your help in that. So, and as you all know, Boo Fest raises monies for these grants, and you've heard these projects tonight. So that's my report on Boo Fest. I'll let somebody else talk if they might.
Additional updates? Director Nathan?
We recently had our first meeting of the year, the Community Curriculum Council, which is formerly the CCIAC. And this year, we're going to be reaching out and meeting with community stakeholders to get feedback on the World's Best Workforce data and goals. So between now and October 31st, the members of the Community Curriculum Council are going to be taking the components of the World's Best Workforce to teachers, parents, district staff, community members, PTA, and then bringing that feedback back and incorporating it with feedback from the board to be included in the report that has to be submitted by December 15th. So look for those opportunities.
Additional, Director Margaret?
Yeah, there were a few of us who attended the Rochester Equity Advisory Team training on Monday, ally training. This group's charge is to engage community members in discussions about racism and how we can combat that and educate people to overcome that. Ally training not only helps people of any ethnicity, of any color, to see racism where it exists, but also provides them with strategies about how to help educate, how to help combat different forms of racism. So it was a good training, and I think those of us who attended found it useful, and hopefully the REIT committee members did as well.
Director Workman?
I also attended the first AMSD Association of Metro School Districts, of which we are a member, meeting on September 5th. And this entire session was dedicated to a presentation of survey results, which was called 2019 Self-Inflicted Wounds. There were 26 categories. Would you like a sample, or should I read all of them? I see sample on your face. Okay. So some interesting things. Millennial parent turnout is lower than the empty nesters, so we would really like all of our millennial parents to keep that in mind, that they really need to get a jump on the, the empty nesters in this next election. The most important state issue for those surveyed is education, followed by healthcare and transportation. Seventy-two percent of those surveyed support a mandatory inflation increase in the education funding formula, but some are concerned that the increase would only be inflationary. There were six survey questions about collective bargaining and teachers. There were president and governor job ratings, which are, they were up to date a few months ago, but that's changed since. And approximately 1,000 people were polled in the metro area, and a year or so ago, I asked about Rochester, like, we are part of this. So this year, the survey also included 100 from Rochester and 100 from St. Cloud. I think you got an email from Wendy about the upcoming annual conference. Was that from you or somebody else? Yes, on November 13th. The conference topic is building bridges between school and community. There will be more information on that coming from AMSD, and you can find that on amsd.org. The presenters will be Dr. Marguerite Rosa from Georgetown University, who focuses on quantitative policy analysis, particularly in the area of education finance, and effectively communicating to both internal and external audiences. And the Minneapolis Public Schools will report on the recent innovative parent engagement efforts in their district. I have one more.
Please continue.
One more. This is really not a committee, but the MSBA Delegate Assembly ballots were sent out on Friday. You have until September 30th to vote, so if you haven't already voted, please do so before you forget.
Okay, thank you very much. Consent Agenda, this is an action item. Does anyone want any item removed for separate consideration? Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, we have one retirement in consent. It's Deborah Bieber, adult literacy teacher at Hawthorne Education Center, retirement effective at the end of the day, January 8th, 2020. And she has been with the district for 15 years, so we thank her for her service to the district.
7.01 Approval of Election Judges and Their Respective Polling Places for the November 5th, 2019 Election. This is a briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Mr. John Carlson, Executive Director of Finance, will brief us on this agenda item.
Thank you again. We're here today with hopefully the final resolution that needs to be passed prior to the election. This one deals with appointing election judges. So as the only thing on the ballot in our school district, we've been tasked with lining up our own election judges and our own polling places, and we are about 96% of the way there. There are 58 polling places, and you need about anywhere from four to 10 judges at each polling location, depending on the size of it. And there's probably six to 10 slots that have not been filled. So there's been hundreds of phone calls made to a list of known people who have served as election judges in the past, and we're still trying to track down a few more. So the purpose of passing this tonight, if you would, is because part of it deals with the absentee ballot board. And so that will kick off next week on September 25th. Those dates are posted in there when we'll be doing the absentee ballot board, but those are open to the public if they'd like to come in and watch us open up envelopes, make sure that everything's been signed and done the correct way on those. We don't actually look at the ballots. Those stay sealed, so we don't know how people are voting, but we just look to make proceed, look to make sure procedurally that everything's been filled out appropriately, and then we either accept or we reject. And if we reject, then we send them back out to people to review.
Discussion, Director Workman?
Yes, I have a question. I know students, high school students have been election judges in the past. Are they eligible to do that? Is there an age limit, like 18 or over?
I believe you would need to be a legal adult, so 18 or over. You could probably sign up and do the training that needs to be done and become an election judge.
Just to push this for some of our high school students, they also are going to be paid. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Will the students be paid? I understand employees will not be paid.
That's correct. We are not paying our staff that have to serve for the early voting, but the election judges that serve the day of will be paid $13 an hour unless they're a head judge, in which case it'd be $15 an hour for that.
Additional questions?
Move to action.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Bid resolved. That's the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the resolution relating to appointing election judges and absentee ballot board members for the November 5th, 2019, school district special election.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Carlson. 7.02 Approval of Proposed School District Property Tax Levy Payable 2020 briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Mr. Carlson, Executive Director of Finance, will brief us on this agenda item.
So what is the property tax levy? The property tax levy is revenue into the district's general fund for operations, as well as certain targeted programs. It also goes into our community, community education fund, and it also goes into our debt service fund to provide principal and interest payments. So who determines the amount of the property tax levy? Pause for just a second. I'm going to bring this up on my iPad. All right. The state legislature makes the laws, and the Minnesota Department of Education calculates the maximum amounts that school boards approve. So when I get to the actual amount, it's already gone through the Department of Education. They've calculated against the state laws, and they're telling you what the maximum is that you can levy. You can't go above that. You can go below it if you want, but you can't go above. Now, the voters in the district can choose to override the maximum set by law, and you can do that through three ways. You can have an operating referendum, which we did in 2015, that provides additional general operating money. We can do what we're doing on November 5th. We can do what we're doing on November 5th, which is a building bond referendum. It allows you to build new or remodel facilities. Or you can do a capital projects referendum, which is pretty much used exclusively for technology. We do not have a capital projects technology levy. So who pays the property tax? Homeowners, apartment owners, farmers, businesses, they all contribute and pay their share of the district's property tax levy. And the amount they pay is determined by the state law and how that's split up to the various properties, and they use the county assessor's value of each property. And then procedurally, the county sends out the taxing bills, and you're, as a homeowner, need to pay those by May 15th and October 15th. So the property tax base for Rochester Public Schools last year was $13.8 billion, and that's the referendum market value. That's not the whole value of the, of, of all the properties within the school district. It excludes cabins, which we have very few of those in this county or in our school district boundaries, and it doesn't exclude farms. So when I'm talking about the mark, the property tax base, it excludes those two things. Last year, $13.8 billion, it is going to be $15 billion for next year, meaning there is $1.2 billion of property growth, almost 9%. And of that, about $300 million was new construction, which means for the first time next year, there's gonna be about $300 million worth of new homes, new businesses that are added to the property tax. So they'll be paying for the first time, which is good because it takes the levy and it spreads it out further. And generally, what that means is that people pay less of a percentage than they did the year before because there's more properties in the district. So, last year's levy was $56 million. The maximum amount at this time for next year that you can approve would be about $54.9 million, and that's the number before the referendum. Since the referendum doesn't happen till November 5th, we can't really deal with that amount right now, so I will talk about that in a few minutes. But for right now, the maximum you can approve would be a decrease of $1.1 million from last year. So why would our property taxes be going down $1.1 million? Well, this is the year, we've talked about it now for about the last four years, that Century High School Riverside are paid off, or will be paid off on February 1st, so you no longer have to set a levy to pay the principal and interest on those buildings starting next year. So that's again why it's a good time for us as a district to be running an operating referendum, because the taxes are going down because of those other two buildings. So is it normal for property taxes to go down? I was wondering if people would ask that, because usually you hear, "Property taxes are going up, property taxes are going up." At the public school district, four of the last nine years, we've either had a flat levy or a decrease. So because the levy is set and controlled by state law, it really depends on how many kids you have and what your expenses are that are approved legally that can go on the property tax levy. The three years where we had larger-than-normal increases were all related to either a new law, because the legislature approved like local optional revenue in 2015, or the voter-approved referendum passed by the voters for 2016, when it first hit the tax rolls. And then the school board approved additional referendum authority for 2017. And so those match out to the three years out of the last nine where we had an actual increase. All right, so the bond referendum on November 5th, how's that gonna play into here? There's a couple of things we just wanted to point out. Obviously, Century Riverside, we no longer have to make a levy for those debts to repay. Our district is operating near capacity. As we've talked about a lot, we're at 98% at our elementaries, 99 at our middle schools. We'll be giving you a refresh number here in a couple of weeks when we do our October 1st counts. But we do have a solution for this, as long, as well as with security and safety, and to enhance our middle school and high school spaces on the November 5th, so that question is before the voters. And if the bond referendum does pass, taxpayers will see an increase that is already partially offset, again, because Riverside and Century are being paid off. So we did put here on this slide, we said, "If both questions, one and two, pass, the increase on a $200,000 home will be no more than $96 per year." I wanted to give you some updated information that we got today. So we've, that $15 billion number is a number that's new to us. We did not have that when we were planning for the referendum. We were assuming the property tax base would grow a little, but not to that extent. So where we sit right now, in reality, is we've learned that a $200,000 homeowner will see an estimated $42 annual increase if question one passes. And if both questions pass, it'd be more like $48 annually. So it's literally almost half of what we've been saying for the last seven to eight months because of the new information we've received just this week. So this is not something we've been hiding or not trying to make public. We, you know, this is a lot of moving targets here with these numbers, and now they're kind of locking in, and we know where we're gonna land. So this is a positive impact for our taxpayers. I think it makes, again, the message of the referendum sound even more palatable to people. So what is the timeline from here? We have a few more steps. We'll need you to approve a preliminary maximum levy by October 1st, so I'm recommending we just hold and wait on that until the next meeting. And then after that, we'll have the truth and taxation hearing after the referendum, and then you'll be asked to approve the final, final levy, either with the referendum results, with it passing, or as it basically is right now, without the referendum on there. And you'll get to do that on December 10th.
I will, I will add, we, because John mentioned this news we just received this afternoon, we will be working on a new message, and John will be doing a new video to try to explain why. I mean, it's great news, it's good news, but we wanna make sure that we do a good job of educating the voters so they understand why the decrease. So we will use all the different outlets that we have to get that, give us a couple of days to, to get that together, and then we'll be pushing that out in many different avenues.
And this is a briefing item, so Director Schlussner and then Workman?
I was just gonna request that you reiterate those new numbers once again.
So $42 if question one passes would be the increase on a $200,000 home, or $48 a year if it's both questions pass. So literally almost half of what we've been saying. I think 48 is exactly half of the 96 we've been saying.
Director Workman?
Yes, so I have a question that you might not be able to answer. Well, before I say that, I wanna say that I had the pleasure of being at the referendum presentation yesterday at Fidel, and Mr. Carlson did just a phenomenal job and really good at answering questions, and we had a lot of fun. I did, anyway, because we got to stay for the whole meeting. Okay, so if the second question, or if both questions on the referendum don't pass, will we be looking at budget cuts?
No, we will not have to cut the budget. What is basically coming off the, the property taxes is those, basically like a mortgage payment, and the mortgage is paid off, so we're fine.
Additional questions of Mr. Carlson? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And before we move to closed session, for those high school students who are here because of, of their government classes, we'll be going to closed session, but we'll invite you to come and have your paperwork signed soon as we do so.
Pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 13D.03 subdivision 1, I move to go into closed session to discover, yes, to discuss labor negotiations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move to closed session. Calling the regular scheduled board meeting back to order at 6:43 PM. We're at item 704, resolution disciplining an employee. This is an action item. That's the resolution. That was part of the paperwork being passed. Whereas the school board has reviewed a draft of a letter to an employee informing employee of discipline being taken by the school district, now therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 535 Rochester Public Schools as follows. Number one, the school board hereby approves the letter setting forth the discipline and the basis or cause for the discipline. Number two, the school board chairs directed to sign the letter on behalf of the school board. Number three, the district superintendent or his designee is directed to serve the approved letter to the employee and to place a copy of the letter in the employee's personnel Pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 13.43 subdivision 2, the specific reasons for the proposed discipline, the nature of the proposed discipline, and the letter are private data on the employee until final disposition of the proposed disciplinary action.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Roll call. Thank you.
Ms. Amundson?
Aye.
Chair Barlow?
Aye.
Ms. Marvin?
Aye.
Ms. Nathan?
Aye.
Mr. Schlussner?
Aye.
Ms. Seelinger?
Aye.
Ms. Workman?
Aye.
I move to amend the agenda to add the following item, approval of the 2019-2021 Rochester Principals Association collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Munoz?
Yes, we don't have anybody in the audience, but we'd like to thank.
Well, they're there. We do.
No, I didn't, I didn't mean that. I meant from RPA to thank them personally.
You're invisible.
We have wonderful people in the audience, but we don't have representatives from RPA, but I would like to thank them. It was a collaborative effort, and we were able to come up with a contract at 5% increase over two years, so I just wanna thank them for the work and appreciate the collaborative approach.
Move approval. We need to read the resolution, please. It does need to be.
Thank you. That's the School Board of Independent School District Number 535 does hereby ratify the 2019-2021 collective bargaining agreement between the Rochester Public Schools and the Rochester Principals Association, RPA employees.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Is there any other business? Seeing none, meeting is adjourned at 6:47 PM.